Good evening. The May 11, 2016 meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors will now come to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manther? Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Oats?
Present.
Mr. Fiero?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Morris?
Dr. Hartsfield?
Here.
And Ms. Robinson?
Here. We do have one member that is absent and I would like for us to consider Asia Morris being excused if there is not any objection to her excused absence from this meeting. Is there any objection?
So, no.
If not, the absence is excused. It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manther?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Mr. Evans? Mrs. Morris? Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes. The Chair recognizes interim Superintendent Allen Tunis to present the custodial services proposal.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and my recommendation to the board is the approval of 016-S005-196, which is the contracted services for Marsis and Associates to serve as our custodial contractor. I am also pleased to state to the members in the audience that the Board of Education has approved our contract for our employees with the SEIU and raises will be provided in operation within the terms of the agreement will go into effect immediately. It will be for the remainder of this year and all of next year as well. So, we're pleased about that and our SEIU partners have ratified as well. So, we're pleased about that and I recommend that we move forward with the contract for custodial services with Marsis and Associates.
Now will be an appropriate time if there are questions seeking information to ask those questions of interim Superintendent Tunis now. Are there any questions seeking information? Recognize Board Member Matthew Oats?
Just a question. Are these, is this contract covering all of our schools, just the secondary schools?
Currently, it will serve schools where there are vacancies. We will not replace any of our current employees with contracted service. We do have part-time employees, any full-time employees. We do have part-time employees that will have opportunities for full-time employment through the contractor.
Madam Chair, I had a question. It is our policy to go with the lowest and best bid. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And in this case, is Marsis the lowest bid of the four that staff evaluated?
They are the lowest and best. They're not the lowest financially. There was another bid that was lower, but it was determined that they were not the best and we've had experiences with them and are recommending we not take the low bid, but go with the lowest and best. This particular vendor is 100% MBE, which is one of the high priorities that the district is working on. They are currently out of town, but they're going through the certification process through the city of Kansas City right now, which we're pleased about and will be in place or we plan to have that in place prior to the time this contract would go into effect.
And a follow-up question, Mr. Tunis. So, is there a simple definition of what best bid is? So, is that pretty much very broad?
Simple, no. But I think we use the term lowest and best because we use an evaluation criteria to try to take and make a subjective decision as objective as possible. We do that through criteria that we establish. We advertise what that criteria is so that the vendors that are submitting proposals or bids on any of our projects will know how they're going to be evaluated. And so, we use a committee structure to evaluate proposals, interviews, and we factor in cost, obviously, as well as references, which are all part of the criteria that must be provided. So, there's not a simple explanation that says, "This is it," but all of those factors come into play.
Sure. Included in that criteria, is there any preference given to Kansas City-based businesses?
Absolutely. We have credit in our point system that provides not just for Kansas City. We do it a couple of ways. We oftentimes will look at Kansas City School District, Kansas City, Missouri, and the state of Missouri.
And then, the next bid that would have fallen after the proposed vendor, what would have been the cost differential?
Over the entire length of the contract would have been approximately $4.2 million.
More, okay. And I remember meeting with you and other staff and I thought there was a figure of just a million dollars' worth of savings. What did I misunderstand on that figure?
This would be for the length of the contract, for the entire term.
So, then, on an annual basis, it'd be a little over $1.3 million savings?
I believe the annual difference is about a million dollars. Daryl, is that right?
And my final question, Madam Chair, I appreciate the support or patience here. So, that million or more figure, while it does sound substantial, what percentage of our overall district budget does that represent?
Isn't our overall budget 218 million this year?
So, less than 1% is what we're...
Definitely less than 1%.
Much less. So, while a million dollars may sound like a tremendous savings from a budget impact, it's very minimal.
Well, I don't necessarily think that it is minimal because we're striving to divert as many resources we possibly can into the instructional programs for our students. If we were to take those resources and divvy those up, make them available to our schools and our classrooms, I think that they would think that that's a considerable amount of money. And so, we really try to evaluate every dollar that we spend, making sure that it is placed in its highest priority. I know that the, by not going with the lowest bid, we're going to spend more money on this particular contract than what we could have by going with the lowest bid. But I don't want to look at it in overall percentages because we're still trying to do so much more with the limited resources we have.
Okay. I just want to remind my colleagues that we are asking questions, seeking information. We will move into a debate period very shortly. Board Member Hartsfield, do you have a question? If there are no other questions, it would be in order to accept a motion to approve this proposal.
Madam Chairwoman, so moved.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation of the interim Superintendent of Schools to approve the RFP-C16002 Custodial Services with Marsis and Associates for the purposes of contributing to the efficient operation of schools by performing custodial duties in the amount of $10,43,979. The agreement is effective beginning July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2019, with two additional one-year renewal options. Is there any debate on this motion? We'll start with Board Member Hartsfield.
Yes, I would just like to add, since the discussion was about the criteria and it being the lowest and the best, one of the things that we look at is you talked about the efficient operation of schools and we realize that custodial work is often looked at as just a sanitation piece, but we know that classrooms and schools that are not clean also have a negative effect on everyone in the building. And so, as we look at price, we also look at what is the product we get for the price. And one of the things we know that we have to have is not just sanitation, but we also have to have where the work is done to the level of expectation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I guess a few points. I would agree with Dr. Hartsfield and certainly, I was sharing this with someone when I was looking at this issue. I have tremendous respect for individuals who perform the janitorial services. In fact, I can recall the year I was going to be married, I worked a part-time job cleaning a building on 45th and Main. So, I understand what that's like to have to go from one job to another. So, I have tremendous respect. However, I really feel like this board would be sending a wrong message by using local taxpayer dollars with an out-of-state business, especially in an area where this is not what I would consider a specialized service. Again, while I have respect for the men and women who perform this job, this is not a unique service that we have to go out of state to hire someone. Also, I think there's a tendency that with Kansas City-based businesses, they have a greater investment and there's a stronger likelihood that the dollars that they receive are going to be reinvested back into the city versus sharing them with a corporate office or an office that's located outside of our city. And then, the last point I would make too, is going with a locally-owned business, there's a tendency to do business with existing Kansas City businesses and my fear would be that this group out of state, which I think is in Houston and Memphis, would be buying supplies from other states, which would mean less dollars coming into our Kansas City economy. Thank you.
Okay. We would like to accept debate from someone that's in support of the motion now. Is there anyone that's in... Okay. Board Member Manther?
I am in support of this motion and I appreciate the fact that the policy by which the administration reviews these kinds of proposals includes multiple criteria and there has been considerable discussion among, at this board and in this meeting room here over the past two years regarding concerns about the prior contractor. There were lots of concerns logged by community constituents and even among our body about the quality of the work and this had been raised on multiple occasions and I believe that the administration had provided feedback to the vendor, in fact, and there was concern that the facilities were not being cared for and represented the quality of the environment that we wanted for our children and our staff and our visitors. And so, therefore, I appreciate the work that's gone into securing this proposal.
Board Member Oats?
I know we're in debate, but I just had a few clarification items I wanted to get. On the employment aspect, they're employing people who live in Kansas City, right? They're not just bringing people from...
That's correct. They're not bringing a team with them. They're going to employ people here in Kansas City.
Locally. And do they currently have a presence here in Kansas City?
They do not have a presence here and it's my understanding, Daryl, correct me if I'm wrong, the other three firms that submitted are either national or international firms that may have a presence in Kansas City, but to my knowledge, their home office is not here.
Yes, all three, all the other firms are national and international firms.
Then I want to ask about monitoring to touch on a point that Ms. Manther just made. In the past, there had been concerns with the previous contractors. So, what ways have we, I guess, looked to address monitoring the quality of maintenance, I guess it's not maintenance, but janitorial services?
Well, one of the first thing that we did in the RFP is we put in very stringent cleaning requirements and if you went through the whole RFP, it actually lists the tasks and frequencies, the cleaning levels and it has clean levels from 1 through 5 and we've established a clean level 1, which is the very best, which is like hospital-level cleaning for restrooms and entryways. The rest of the spaces would be a clean level 2, which we feel is very acceptable. I wouldn't note that the vendor that we're recommending by far had the best quality assurance program. That was a very important part of our evaluation.
Thank you.
Are there any other debate? Is there any other debate on the motion? If there is no further debate, will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manther?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris? Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes. The item is approved. The next item of business is the introduction of the May 25, 2016 business item. The Chair recognizes our interim Superintendent, Mr. Tunis.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair. And just prior to introducing the items for our May 25 meeting, I would like to draw your attention to the cabinet table where I would like to extend a congratulations to Dr. Daryl Davis on his most recent accomplishment. We are all very, very proud of you and want to know how in the world you really did it. Congratulations, Daryl. Good job. I'd also like to ask Tanya Gilbert to come forward. We have put together a very quick, two-minute video regarding some special recognition for one of our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Tunis. Recently, as you know, Lincoln College Preparatory Academy was named number-one high school in the state of Missouri for the second year in a row and we're also proud of the fact that they're named one of the top 100 high schools in the nation. And so, tonight, we'd like to honor Lincoln College Prep with a special video that was produced by our very own Adriana Schoonover, who's a Lincoln College Prep junior. You may remember Adriana as the person that put together the powerful video that features Dr. Mark Bedell. And so, tonight, we'd like this video to kick off our hashtag, "I Am Lincoln College Prep" campaign and in this campaign, we're inviting current Lincoln students, alumni, parents, staff members to upload their videos to our YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, and other social mediums to add to our video. And so, I will say, you might recognize just a couple of the faces in the video. Robin?
Exit. Historic.
Lincoln is a community of individuals made up of different ethnic and economic backgrounds.
Lincoln means getting to work with amazing, inspiring students every day and seeing their potential and seeing their growth.
Being part of something very special, both the faculty and the students.
Lincoln is blessed with the most talented students.
Lincoln is an attitude of mind in which education and knowledge is valued.
Lincoln is opportunity.
Challenging.
Included.
Success.
Talent.
Original.
Legacy.
I am Lincoln Prep.
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 I am Lincoln High School.
So, tomorrow, Adriana at 11 o'clock will be featured on 41 Action News with Cynthia Newsom where she will discuss her time at Lincoln College Prep and she will be joined by a couple of her classmates. And so, we encourage you to take a look at that show if you're able to. Also, tomorrow, City Hall will present their resolution to 35 Lincoln students, four teachers, for their magnificent accomplishment and that will take place tomorrow at City Hall at 3 o'clock. So, if you're able to join us, we invite you to come over and see that. And stay tuned for more Lincoln recognitions, including a press conference on May 31st where our students will lead a press conference with Congressman Emanuel Cleaver. So, we'll keep you informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert and Adriana and Justin for all the work that you're doing and really making it, you guys are doing a great job and we really appreciate it. Thank you. I would like to, very quickly, normally what we do at this time is to share with you what will require board action at our business meeting on May 25th. As of right now, we have two items. The first item is with the Kansas City Public School Retirement System, which is our annual payment based upon our retirement contributions, half of which will be made by the district, half of which is withheld from the employee's paycheck. We're required by law to make that payment and that payment is due on December 31st, but this is the amount that will be required from last calendar year and the way the law states, we have a year to do that. So, we'll be asking the board to approve that. And then, the second item that's listed there will be the comprehensive budget based upon the timeline that we established, well, probably nine months ago. This is the meeting coming up on the 25th where we'll ask the board for approval. I know that I've been getting some questions from individual board members trying to report the questions and the answers to the remainder of the board members. So, if you have anything else that you might need answers to, please don't hesitate to give us a call prior to the 25th. We'll make sure we have a response for you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tunis regarding May 25th board action items? The Chair recognizes our interim Superintendent, Mr. Tunis, to present our monthly board workshop, the Missouri Advisory Corps and Early Learning Commission.
Yes, thank you. And we have two items, as our President has just alluded. Our first is with the Missouri Advisory Corps and really, the content of this really became an outcome of conversation that we had with our board chair, talking about what options and what counseling and guidance are we providing to our high school students as they evaluate and investigate their opportunities for higher education. And so, I've asked Dr. Morello to come forward and introduce our guests to talk a little bit about a program that we have in each of our high schools to meet that need as effectively as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Tunis, and good evening, board chair and board members. I'm going to introduce Ms. Lilly Engelbrecht, who is our Director of Guidance and Counseling. She works very closely with this wonderful program, our Missouri College Advising Corps. So, I'm going to let them get into their presentations. So, Ms. Engelbrecht, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, Dr. Morello. Good evening, Superintendent Tunis, Board President Robinson, and KCPS board members. The MCAC Missouri College Advising Program has been in the district for six years, started in 2010, 2011 with two advisors, one at Northeast High School and Paseo Academy. In my first year, 2011-12, Dr. Beth Tankersley-Bankhead approached me about expanding the program to other schools and I said, "Yes, I'm very excited about that." So, we love our MCAC advisors, they're a godsend to us and don't know what we'd do without them. As you see on the screen, they are currently in six of our high schools. We just recently added an advisor at AC Prep two years ago. This program is completely free to the district, is funded by Mizzou and 31 external partners or funders that they have, including AmeriCorps. MCAC is a near-peer college advising program. These are MU, recent graduates of MU, and they serve in our partner schools for two years. The program is not designed to direct students in any particular post-secondary institution, but to help students identify and to help them enroll in their best-fit post-secondary opportunity. MCAC is also designed to help students and families see that college is an attainable goal, college completion is an attainable goal, and it also provides students and families with that college planning process, college application, and financial aid processes. And it is also designed to improve or to increase college enrollment among our partner schools. Tonight, I'm very excited to introduce two of our awesome advisors, Dani Poone from Paseo Academy and Juanita Ariza from Northeast High School. Tonight, I want to give a little disclaimer. Some of the data that you'll see is as of March 31st and as you know, our advisors are working constantly till the end of the school year to get our students more financial aid, scholarships, and so forth. So, we're going to be working on the final senior audit and so, we're working on collecting that end-of-the-year data and we can get that data to you by June 1st. So, at this time, I'd like to call to the podium Dani and Juanita.
Hello. I'm really short, so I'm going to put that down a little bit. Hello, everybody. Like she said, my name is Juanita Ariza and I serve at Northeast High School.
My name is Dani Poone. I'm the college advisor at Paseo Academy.
So, we're here to kind of talk about our program a little bit to you guys, so we'll go ahead and switch to the next slide. Like Ms. Engelbrecht said, this data is as of March 31st, so the numbers have changed a little bit, but we kind of want to give you guys a breakdown of exactly what we do. That first line that you guys see are individual advising sessions and I would say that is mostly what we do on a day-to-day basis. Our program is extremely unique because we are in the schools full-time, all day, every day. We have our own spaces that are really concentrated on that college and career readiness. So, when students come in either with appointments or walk-ins, whatever they choose to do, we're there to serve them whenever they need. As you guys can see, as of March 31st, our total around the KCPS district was 6,449 and on average, that's about 1,000 meetings. So, that could be a couple of meetings with one student or one meeting with, you know, one student. So, as you go down, we do college planning workshops, we assist them with applications. We also serve family members and that's something that's really important to us as a group because we know that family is a big key component of whether students decide to pursue a college education or not. So, for us, that's about 144 family members serve per school. One of my favorite things is going on campus tours with the students. Our program is unique in that we are able to take them as part of our budget. A lot of schools aren't able to go on campus tours because that's just not part of what they do. So, that way, we're able to take the students and they can really see the campuses for what they are, which I don't know if you guys visited your schools before you chose what you did, but I know for me, that was a big part of choosing Mizzou as my undergrad experience. Also, we have college representatives come to visit with us and a bunch of other different things, but that's just the breakdown of what we do on a day-to-day basis.
So, we've talked a little bit about college applications, about what we do during the one-on-one meetings, but we also want to talk about the financial part of it. We help our students fill out those college applications, figure out what the best-fit and best-match colleges are for them, but we also want to make sure that they have the finances to actually pay for college, which I know is a big struggle for most of my students. That's probably the first question I hear from them before any other questions. And so, kind of the three main things I want to talk about with the finances is FAFSA, the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, institutional aid, and also private scholarships. With FAFSA, that is probably one of the biggest sources of finances for our students to be able to pay for college. That's why I'm super excited that Missouri Department of Higher Education is actually going to be able to have an individual basis on each of our students to see who has actually completed, submitted, and also completed, which means if they need any more documentations or if they need to update their information, they will be able to let the advisors or counselors' advisors know what they need to do in order to make sure they get that financial aid. So, with scholarships, up there, we have about 948 assists, which means that could either mean the same scholarship multiple times or that's different scholarships with different students. So, that's the total. On average, it's about 158 per school and I know that number is drastically different. Speaking from Paseo Academy, I know in April, a lot of my students were ready to figure out how they're going to pay for college and so, there were multiple days, many days, that they stayed after school trying to figure out how they're going to finish these applications, whether that's having me or the English teachers edit their essays or just making sure that their applications were done correctly. And they, I don't know how it is at Northeast, but for my school, they usually send it to me and I will mail it off for them to ensure that it gets to where they need to go. So, institutional aid, I want to talk about that third row and then also the fifth row. For institutional aid, the total is 235,000. That is how much the schools are willing to give the students for their first year. And if you skip down to the total renewable value, that is how much they're willing to give you, your sophomore, your junior, your senior year. So, not just letting them go for one year, but being able to actually afford it for the rest of their college experience. And so, we also want to talk about the private aid scholarship, which is about $68,000 as a total of all KCPS schools right now. Once again, that number is going to be a lot higher since I know many of the advisors, counselors are working very hard on that. And so, speaking from Paseo's numbers, I believe we have over $400,000 in institutional aid and private scholarships and none of that is included in the Pell Grant or any federal aid.
So, the next slide we want to direct you guys to is Decision Day. So, this is kind of the more fun stuff besides crunching numbers. We get to kind of throw a little party for our... We get to kind of throw a little party for our students at the end of the year. For the ones that have chosen a post-secondary pathway of choice, whether that's four-year, two-year, military, or workforce, we really want them to feel like they made a decision, and that was really important. So it's fantastic because every advisor kind of gets to customize their decision day to whatever they want to do. So personally, I do raffles. I hired a DJ this year. We did a little photo booth. I catered some pizza and really just gave them a time to be together and celebrate their accomplishments. So you guys can see some of the pictures there, like we said, and it's really just a celebration. Dani did his outside, and we all help each other. We do cookouts, things like that. So Decision Day is that big final event that they get to participate in for their college-going process with us.
So we talked about the college process. We talked about in school, about actually helping them get to what college they want to go to if they choose to go to a college. We've talked about scholarships, finances, and we've talked about celebrating with them at the end of the year. But this next part is going to be talking a little bit about the summer transitioning into college. For some of you, you may have heard of the term "summer melt." Summer melt is a phenomenon where students may have their college applications in, they may believe that they're going in the fall, but for whatever reason, whether that's housing or financial aid, they do not actually step foot onto campus in the fall. I know for a lot of my students, last year, they were very confused on what they needed to do, and so that is why we're happy to say that College Connection Center is going to be going again for the third year in a row. This program is going to help students be able to have a place to go so that they have the resources, they have the assistance to know what to do during summer, so that these students who may not have the resource will be able to actually step foot onto campus and actually get their college education. And so in prior years, it was only at Penn Valley that we were able to have an advisor or someone there to help students. But since we are not just in KCPS, but we're in Raytown and we're in North Kansas City, we have actually expanded out to the Raytown area, also the Kansas City Public Schools, and also at Penn Valley again. And so that way, students know where they can go. They know that there's someone there who has that kind of information that we have given them during the school year. And so we'll be sending them text messages, emails with different reminders to let them know that there is stuff that they need to keep track of so that they'll actually be able to attend.
Questions?
Do we have time for a round of questions? Yes.
Thank you so much. I'm so glad that you are availing our students' opportunity to see persons who have just completed where they can easily begin. And Dani, I did see you at Paseo, and I saw how the students were very happy with the work that you've done. I guess that my question goes back to our counselor, because if I went back onsite to read about the program, and I do see that the recent graduates given a five-week opportunity of study to prepare for this, how is the work done with the counselors? Because I understand that there has to be some academic counseling as well that goes along with college readiness. So what is the relationship of the counselors with the advisors? Can you tell me about that process, please?
Okay. So most of our counselors are actually our site supervisors. We're required to have a site supervisor within the high school. So Dani and I work very closely with our counselors as far as doing, you know, if they're at the counselor checking grades, checking all those kinds of things, then they come to us, and we're able to look on Tyler, see how they're doing academically, see what GPA is, see what ACT score is, to really be able to connect those two together and really say, "Okay, you need to prepare to take four years of math, so counselor, can we make sure that we get this on the schedule?" Things like that.
Thank you.
Board member Mantha?
So I'm really interested to see this summer melt center, because I really, I have some familiarity with that phenomenon and having had children go through and seeing some of the struggles that happen with students over the summer. They are confused, and they don't always make it. Maybe their families don't exactly know what to do. Can you offer up to us, what would you think that KCPS, our district, might do differently or better to help reduce summer melt, to really help students in that bridge to college where there's some uncertain times they experience in the summer?
Go ahead.
So what could KCPS do for our students to be able to make sure that summer melt does not occur? And so, I mean, something that the college advisors do is having those meetings with students, being able to give them like a checklist of sorts of housing, of financial aid, making sure that they get through that. And so I know a lot of, I know AC Prep, I'm not sure what other schools have, like a college summit class or some sort of college readiness, and that is something that I have admired. I'm not, I know Paseo hasn't been able to have a college-ready class yet, but that, those kind of resources help the students, because oftentimes, they're trying to make sure that they get their grades ready. They are wanting to make sure they can graduate. And so sometimes, that means they can't come to us to be able to get those resources. But these college courses really help in terms of transitioning them, helping them figure out housing, scholarships, yeah, different resources like that. So I don't know. Do you want to add more?
No, I mean, I think one of the things that I've seen as an advisor is we put a lot of emphasis on graduation, but then even we have students coming back a couple of days later, and they're like, "We don't know what to do." So it's just overall explaining, there's so much more that happens after you cross that stage. And I know that's an overall message, but that's something that I would love to see much more of, is what happens after you cross that stage.
Board member Oats?
First off, thanks for the work you guys do. College and career readiness is obviously something very important for the board and for the administration, and, you know, along with the academic part, it's also about how do you actually get to college and pay for it and stuff? And I think with some of our families who maybe don't know how to navigate that route themselves, the work that you guys do is really important. My question was, I guess, at what point do you guys come in contact with students? So I'm asking grade level. Is it by reference? How do you guys?
Yeah, so we do deal with all grade levels. Our priority is the seniors, and I would say that's definitely on a school-to-school basis, as far as kind of jokingly what we say, appointments, where they kind of just walk in. Personally, at Northeast, I have a very open-door policy, and I think that makes the students feel more comfortable, so they can come to me for those one-on-one advising sessions, or we very, very accurately, sorry, track who we've met with. So if I haven't seen a student in a couple of weeks, I'll call them out of class, and the teachers are really good about that. As far as the younger grade levels, we do a lot of in-classroom workshops. So we go in to the freshmen, introduce ourselves, sophomores, juniors, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Board member Woski?
I love this program. It sounds, I like the near-peer component, because I think that's key. It's very much like the cityer component. So how, can you just explain real briefly, how do you work with the families? Because that was one of the things that you, I'd like to know more about that part of it.
Yeah. So the family component was actually something I focused on very heavily this year. Oftentimes, the family don't know what to do, and students are at school for half of the day and then at home the other half. So it's important to have the family know what's happening, what they're actually hearing in school. And so I know for me, last year, I was able to make phone calls to every single parent to make sure that they knew what the process was like, specifically with their students. Since both of us track our conversations, our interactions with the students, I was able to tell them, "This is what's been going on. I just wanted to make sure that you knew." Also getting them kind of motivated, I guess, because a lot of times in KCPS, we have a great deal of first-generation college students, meaning their parents never went to college. They don't know what the process is like, or they went to college maybe 20-plus years ago, and it's completely different. So sending out those emails saying, "This is what your student is doing," and also letting them know about any awards that they've been, they've received. I know.
As to like evening workshops with families?
Yeah, and with workshops, we did something called the Parent Series at Paseo this year, where we invited parents to come every two months, and they were able to kind of understand what the process was like for the students, and I would bring in external presenters, so people from UNKC or Rockhurst, or people who are in the higher education level, and tell them exactly what they need to be aware of as their students are going through this, because this really is a community effort. The teachers help out, the parents help out.
One of the things I would like to see in a board packet is more of a holistic approach to counseling, ensuring the statistic that the gentleman just read, that these are our most-needed children, making sure that they have access to the most-prepared individuals in a more holistic approach. So knowing that, I think, would be extremely important in layering with the local article that was done by a local school, where counselors were going to meet with top universities, Ivy League institutions, doing more bridge work with institutions to help our students get noticed. So learning more about the comprehensive program, and this is really, really awesome, and we're glad that you're doing what you're doing, and the energy that you have is exceptional. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item?
Thank you very much. I appreciate, and appreciate all the hard work that you're doing for our students. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to take us through our next presentation, which is our Early Learning Commission. I want to remind the board that this particular commission and this report is something that some of our board members who have been on the board longer have heard a little bit before. Some of our new board members may not have heard that, and you'll have an opportunity to hear historically how we arrived at the place that we're currently in. And we want to talk a little bit about the program itself, and then we also want to talk about some of our recommendations and things we need to do as we build our next steps in terms of moving this initiative, which would provide quality pre-K education for all three- and four-year-olds in the Kansas City School District. So with that, I'm going to ask Jerry Kitsey to come forward and begin our conversation. Madam President, I don't, we're prepared to go through the entire presentation, but if you see a time where we need to stop and break, we certainly can do that to ask additional questions before we continue to go through. I know oftentimes, we'll have a question, but the answer might be coming with a presentation later.
Under individuals' time, if we could go through the presentation, and then we can maybe write down our questions, that would be great.
Perfect. That'd be great. So Mr. Kitsey, floor is yours.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Tunis, cabinet, colleagues, and guests. I've been asked to give a little bit of perspective or maybe context to the discussion that we're about to have. You're going to hear about a three-year effort and counting, and what I'd like to do is take you back just a little bit past that, about three and a half years, to kind of set the stage for this discussion. I can recall at the start of the 12, 13 school year, there were some concerns within the district. Teaching staff had been, in previous administrations, hired, let go under one administration, and then brought back under a different kind of job description. So staff were feeling shell-shocked, started the school year, didn't go well, and I got a call from Mr. Tunis, who I worked with when I was at the college where I was at the time, and he said, "Can you come talk to us? We're about to lose potentially our Head Start Grant." And I met with Mr. Tunis and with Dr. Green and thought, "This is a pretty bad situation. Do you think you can get back to the performance standards?" And Dr. Green was saying, "I don't want to get back to standard. I want to get back to, I want to get to excellence." And it seemed like a really exciting opportunity for this district to do things that would help all children enter kindergarten, prepare to succeed. So the conversation really went well, and what I recognized about the, at least the administration and members of the board were thinking was, we serve about 1,000 to 1,200 children within a district. And even with excellence, when the time comes for children to enter kindergarten, we're only entering a portion of the children that we served, and there are many, many more who are not in a quality environment that are coming into our classrooms. And if you have between 40 and 50 percent, and I think Dr. Morello just saw some data that would just maybe even higher, not ready, not knowing their alphabet, not knowing colors even, it slows down the process of education for all. So we not only needed a strategy for really improving our program and getting it to excellence, we needed something much larger to influence many, many more children that were going to be knocking on our doors in the future, something that would make sure, and the data that spells us out, if you start behind, you stay behind. If you come into school knowing your alphabet, letter recognition, phonemic awareness, you're going to be able to read and write simple sentences by the end of first grade, and we have to make sure all children enter at that level. So the idea of a commission was surfaced by this board. A resolution was passed. Is there a way to get to the slide presentation? I'm going to give you a little.
Our board has that in front of them, too, so they have a.
So in the winter of 2013, the conversation began. Thank you. And then in the spring, a resolution was passed, and I'm not going to go into the detail about that. I guess our guests will do that. But the resolution was passed to form a commission to look at the issue of universal access to pre-K for our community, our school district boundary. Number of dignitaries and teachers and academics and civic and business leaders, one of our civic leaders, Mr. Fiero, was part of that commission, and they met over the summer. We brought in guests from the governor and universities and folks from Tulsa and Springfield. So we really explored as a community, what would it take? Where was it happening elsewhere? How do we get to make this happen? So in looking at the timeline, the commission concluded its work, and in the fall of 2013, brought forth a recommendation to this board to say, "This is a viable opportunity. We need to pursue this as a community, so all children can enter school prepared to succeed." In the winter, the commission, in the beginning of 2014, the commission became a private, not-for-profit corporation, so they could continue their study. They researched best practices. They formed the basic structure that would be the future for this commission and the entity that would evaluate quality at the community level. Most of the programs had a way of determining where our children are going, whether there's quality in those sites. We had a thing in Kansas City that we piloted called a Quality Rating System. I think many of you are aware that right around that time, there was legislation in the state of Missouri that then prohibited anyone in the state from doing a quality rating system. There's really good news about that, that we can talk about at a later time. I think that is going away. But at the time, there really was no mechanism. So this group, the commission, and then the Quality Rating Commission, looked at and explored how it would put something in place so that we would know children are in a quality Being a nonprofit, the commission was able to secure some funds to do some initial polling that would determine, is this a viable opportunity in our community? Is there public support for an increase if it were to be a tax levy, a property tax levy? And again, we explored communities that did sales tax, property tax, different variations of trying to fund universal access to pre-K. Work teams were formed. A plan was developed, the basic plan, a lot of details still need to be developed. And then it came down to, in that process of work plans, the best choice for us, that we thought, after all the research, was to go to Denver and really look at how the Denver Preschool Project organized their campaign, how they organized their program, so that dollars are following the children, no matter where they are, as long as they're going into some kind of quality site. We came back from that excited, recognizing also, though, that we were going to have to have some legislation that would enable us to really do this in a organized and efficient manner. As you know, the issue with, if we raise our taxes to support this program, it automatically triggers the state aid, the funding formula. So if we raised a million dollars, technically, some of that money would have to go to the charters. Of course, recognizing that, well, this really isn't for K-12. This is for pre-K. So we were able to get legislation that was introduced this winter that would allow us to use a levy, not trigger the state aid formula, and then based on whatever kind of agreement this body would want to enter into with a separate private entity, it could do so without triggering the charters having to have access to those funds as well. unanimously supported by the charters, letter of support went from the Charter Association to the Senator Pierce, who is leading the push for Senate Bill 996. And that did pass in the Senate. It did pass in the House, I think, last night. You could probably hear more about that from the commission. And it's tremendous legislation. It also repeals that language that outlawed the quality rating system. So a bill intended to support what we're trying to do had even far-reaching benefits. I'm pretty excited. And it's letting, you know how a bill, it's like a Christmas tree, you add all these bulbs to it? We have two Senate amendments, and we have four House amendments onto that bill. One of the House-- One of the House amendments is going to allow Greene County, Springfield, to do... to become authorized as a taxing body to do a sales tax for universal access to pre-K. So they're riding in on our coattails as this legislation gets approved. So there's been a lot of work, a lot of study. In the meantime, the district's been improving its quality of programming. As you saw maybe in a recent board update, we are also now looking at our birth-to-three component of early learning. We think we're pretty strong in three to four. The Secretary of Education wanted to start his annual tour of schools here in Kansas City at our Woodland Early Learning Community School. I think we probably are doing pretty good. So in terms of context, that just sets the stage. We went from being unsure about how to best serve to really doing a much, much better job, approaching excellence, but recognizing it had to be bigger. It has to be more of a community-wide initiative. And to talk about that, I would like to introduce Mr. Herbert Tong.
Thank you, Jerry. As I was listening to Jerry go through this program and try to put it in context, I realized that, and I've heard this probably 50, 60 times, but I realized that it's complicated. This is not an easy subject, and some of you who have been on the board have heard this before. I think this is our sixth appearance before this group. But those of you who are new have not heard it, and I'm just trying to put myself in your position. If I were to hear this for the first time, I'd say, "Whoa, slow down and tell me what this is real about, really about, and what are you really asking us to do? And how's that going to impact what we do and our schools and the kids?" So let me go back to 2013, May of 2013, when this board... And I'm saying that generically because I know not all of you were on this board in May of 2013. But here's what the board adopted as a resolution. This was our task. All five-year-olds within the KCPS geographic boundaries will be socially, emotionally, and academically ready for kindergarten. That was our charge. And I think it's important to point out that it doesn't say only kids that are attending the KCPS School District are going to be eligible for the pre-K program, but all kids who are living within the district regardless of where they may end up going to school. And then you also placed some limitations on us, which I think you'll see. One was to provide recommendations that, if implemented, effectively could accomplish the ends ideally within 10 years. Well, we've reduced that to five years, and I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Number two, to provide recommendations by Labor Day 2013. Well, we did that, and here we are, three years later, still presenting recommendations. Number three, provide recommendations that do not rely on state or federal action. That's a key because we knew that if we tried to get the federal funds, they weren't going to be adequate. If we tried to get state funds, we run into this definitional issue of quality control. We knew that wasn't going to work. So we said, "Okay, we've got to do this on our own. We've got to do this with local funds." Local funds means either a sales tax or a property tax. Sales tax was eliminated fairly early on because we're already at about 10% in Kansas City, and so we decided on the property tax. And that will again come up in a few minutes. And then the last limitation you placed on us was to provide recommendations that can begin being implemented either immediately or over the next 12 months. Well, we didn't do that, but not because we didn't want to. So the commission that Jerry referred to consisted of 33 or 35 people, and if you look at the list, which I think you have in front of you, you'll see that it was a broad spectrum across the community. I started with nine people. When I was asked to do this, I said, "Yes, I'll do it because," as some of you have heard me say before, "I'm a product of the Kansas City Missouri School District." And I was delighted to hear that Paseo has some $400,000. When I went to Paseo, we had nothing. So congratulations on that. But I wanted to do this, and I said, "Well, let's get nine people involved. That should be a workable number." We ended up with 33, but I'm glad we did because we were able to bring in kindergarten teachers, pre-K teachers, community workers, all kinds of people that really did have a place in this program. The Kauffman Foundation gave us some money, which we used to do a poll because we didn't want to start on this if we didn't think that the people were in favor of early childhood education, or even if they were in favor of childhood education, they didn't want to pay for it. The polling results were very good, and you have those results in front of you as well. I think the ballot or the proposition, "Are you in favor of early childhood education?" Yes, about 70%, and I'm short-handing this. "Are you willing to pay for it?" Yes, about 62%. And "Are you more willing to pay for it if it's administered by an independent not-for-profit entity?" The answer is yes. So that's the direction that we went in. I don't think I need to spend a lot of time telling you about the merits of early childhood education. It's been around the country long enough now that I think we all know that it is important. And of course, the goal is to get a child ready for kindergarten because if they're not ready for kindergarten, and you've probably heard this before, there's a good chance that by third grade, they're not going to be reading at grade level. If they're not reading at grade level in third grade, they're going to continue to fall further behind. There's a good chance that many of them will then drop out of school because they are falling behind, and if they drop out of school, it becomes a real economic burden on society, a lot more than the $8,000 a year that we're talking about spending for early childhood education. So yes, this is a good thing. It's a good thing, which has been recognized around the country. Many cities are already doing it. You heard Jerry mention some of those. There's Boston, there's Chicago, there's Seattle, there's San Antonio, there's Tulsa, and many others. And of course, Denver, which is where we visited, and as Jerry said, we learned an awful lot about their 10-year effort. And I mentioned 10-year effort because 10 years is long enough to determine statistically whether or not this program is working. And it's not a universal cure-all. You know, not every kid that goes to pre-K is going to succeed in kindergarten or by third grade. But statistically, they have now shown over 10 years of collecting data that yes, it does work for most kids. They are better off, and the schools are better off, having kids go to pre-K when they and then go to kindergarten. Now, there's a danger, which has been pointed out by many people, which is that you may have a wonderful pre-K program, which we intend to have here in Kansas City, but if the teachers in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade are not of the same quality as the teachers that we hope to have in the pre-K program, there's this burnout, fall-off, whatever you want to call it factor, where they lose all the advantage that they may have had originally. So we're talking about a high-quality program, and we're talking about a program for kids that where they attend eight hours a day, they attend five days a week, and they attend year-round. That's the goal. And our goal is that within five years of starting this, which we hope is soon, that within five years, we will have 80% of all eligible kids enrolled in a qualified... And you'll hear us say that word over and over and over because anybody can go to daycare. That's not a big deal. But we're talking about 80% of all kids in this area. There's about 6,000 three- and four-year-olds at any one time, 80% of those enrolled in a qualified pre-K program in five years. Now, you'll hear "five years" mentioned several times, and let me talk about why we talk about five years. The proposal that we have, that we're asking you to put on the ballot, is a property tax levy of $1.05, actually $1.04. Only Al knows the number. $1.04 plus, which will be in effect for five years. It sunsets in five years. And there was a reason we picked five years, one of which is it gives us a chance to show the world how well this program works. It gives you a chance to determine how well the Early Learning Commission is doing with this program, and it also gives the chamber and other community leaders, civic council who are interested in early K... in a pre-K, gives them a chance to form a larger regional authority, which would have its own taxing power, and that could institute its own pre-K program with taxes raised by that regional authority. Now, that does a couple of things. One, it creates a regional authority for pre-K, which is better than the small one we're talking about. Number two, it restores to you the $1.05 that we're asking you to use for five years for pre-K. In other words, we'll be through with it. Now, you have the option in five years of putting it back on the ballot and saying, you know, "This regional concept isn't working. We don't like it. Maybe it didn't happen, but we like what you all have done with the program, so we're going to go back to the voters and ask them to renew the $1.05 for another whatever, let's say five years or 10 years." Denver, by the way, has now had three elections, the last one being in 2014, and even though their first election failed, by the way, but their last election passed by 60-some percent, I think, or 70%, a big number. So that's the five-year part of this. We want you to do it for five years. At the end of five years, you can say, "Stop." At the end of five years, we may have a larger authority to do this with, with their own taxing. Either way, you'll get your $1.05 back and to use for whatever you want to use it for. And my guess is that even if we didn't do this program, if we didn't use the $1.05 for pre-K, you probably in the next five years are not going to have a ballot election for any other purpose. The ballot language that we're talking about, that would go on this ballot, says that the $1.05 is to be used only for early childhood education. Can't be used for anything else. And that it will be transferred to a 501(c)(3) entity for implementation. So that's all part of the ballot language. In getting to that point, we had to satisfy a lot of people. We had to satisfy the community. We had to satisfy the charter schools. Because as Jerry pointed out, and this is one of those complicated things, under the current law, if you pass a property tax levy, 40 cents out of every dollar would go to the charters. But we didn't want that. We wanted this money to go 100% for early childhood education. The charter said, "Well, yeah, we think that's probably okay, and we may apply to get some of that money. We may establish some pre-K providers and get some of the money for our program." And we said, "That's fine, but we need you to give up your 40 cents in writing." And so we talked to the charters, and there's about 20 of them. George Lopez spent, I don't know how many hours, days, working on that, and it was tough. Every charter has a board. Every board says, "Wait a minute. What are we doing? What are we giving up, and why are we giving up?" Not realizing that they weren't giving up money that they had. This was money that they would never get, but it was complicated. So we said, "Okay, let's go to the legislature and have the legislation fix this 40-cent mess that we've gotten." I don't know how that happened, but there it was. Legislature passed a law which says in effect that the 40-cent rule is still in effect except for money spent for early childhood education. We've had a wonderful educational experience working with our state legislature successfully. Not many pieces of legislation get passed the first time around. Ours did. The Senate passed it a few weeks ago. The House, as Jerry said, passed it last night. There were a few amendments tacked on to it, which now the House and the Senate are going to have to figure out which of those amendments are going to allow to go through, but our basic bill is intact, and we can proceed with it. The 501(c)(3) is going to have a contract with you, with the school district. And I know that Ray Southly is working on that contract as we speak. He may be writing right... Maybe he is. But that contract is going to do two or three things. One, it's going to say that yes, we're going to turn the money over to the 501(c)(3) for use only in early childhood education programs. Number two, it's going to say, "We're going to watch you, 501(c)(3) or LC, whatever you want to call it, to make sure that you're spending the money the way you should be spending it. We're going to ask you for monthly or quarterly reports. We're going to ask for complete transparency in what you're doing, and if we don't like what you're doing, we're going to tell you we don't like what you're doing, and you're going to have to fix it. If you don't fix it, we're going to terminate the contract." So that's your oversight measures into the program that we're suggesting that we have between this district and the 501(c)(3). And lastly, I've got to say that I think this is a real win for the district. It's going to be really nice for the district to be able to announce a positive program. We are going to do something. We're not just going to react to things that happen. We are actually going to take a positive step that helps the kids in the pre-K area, and as a result of that, we're going to have better students coming to our schools. At this point, George Lopez, who's the chair of the ELC, is going to explain exactly what the plan is and how it works. And we'll take questions later, as I understand it. Is that right? Yeah?
Thank you, Herb. And thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and interim superintendent Tunis. I'm very excited to be here today. In fact, I was very, very moved by Herb's remarks. The purpose of my presentation today is to kind of take you through our proposal, which is basically a set of recommendations that our interim group has developed over the course of the last two and a half years. You should have a copy with you, and I'm going to go ahead and go along with it and try and add some additional color to help you kind of get your brains wrapped around it. Page one of this basically lays out the case statement, and then Herb and Jerry spoke very eloquently about the need for early childhood education, specifically to address the issue of kindergarten readiness. We've heard discussion here today that, you know, anywhere from 40 to 60% of the students are not ready on day one. We know that current resources are inadequate to fund all of the 6,000 students or three- and four-year-olds within the district level. We know that alternative proposals that are going before the voters this coming November only fund a portion of the need, and I'm referring to the Raise Your Hands for Children, Tobacco Tax Initiative, as well as the Children's Services Fund proposals, which are both worthy proposals. But what we're talking about, you know, eight hours a day, 52 weeks a year, you know, early childhood education, true universal pre-K that's free, those initiatives, they're not sufficient to fund or even come close to funding the cost of that. Hence the need for a dedicated property tax that would generate about $28 to $32 million per year. So the solution, as Herb laid out, is the program. It's going to be delivered by high-quality pre-K providers. You're going to hear a lot about that here during my presentation. It's going to be administered by an independent 501(c)(3) organization, which already exists with KCPS representation, and as Herb indicated, it lays the groundwork for a permanent regional solution. The benefits to that, you've heard a lot about the first three or four bullet points. There's tons of empirical research that shows that early learning programs work in other cities. I cite Denver, we cite Denver and Tulsa, but throughout our work on this program, we've heard evidence from a lot of other areas that do this. Denver and Tulsa, besides being in fairly reasonable proximity to Kansas City, their programs have been around for 10 years, so they've had a chance to not only assess kindergarten readiness, but they've also had a chance to assess third-grade performance. And they show improvements in literacy and math when compared between participants and non-participants. In fact, just looking at Denver's website today, they've updated and showed behavioral concerns have dipped below 10%, and third-grade reading scores are up in both Denver and Tulsa. We also know that the KCPS pilot program empirically works. So from a risk management standpoint, what are we going to get? Well, we're not going to get perfection, but we're going to get... We believe that we're going to get quality, and there's empirical research that demonstrates its efficacy. I would also touch on some other things which weren't discussed in Herb or Jerry's remarks. English-language learners particularly benefit from early learning due to the immersion... English-language learners particularly benefit from early learning due to the immersion, eight hours of immersion into English, in English language. We think that's a unique advantage. Also, there's considerable research showing the economic benefits for every $1 invested in early learning, depending upon which study you look at, is anywhere from a $2.50 to $17 return, and that would also include savings within the school district budget potentially from special education. Now, I'm not going to completely vouch for that, because I'm not an education expert, but I will tell you, the literature is out there which discusses that. There's also an underlying economic competitiveness advantage to this, which again is debatable, but I think when you take parents that are paying, you know, anywhere from X number of dollars to Y dollars per month in childcare or other, or some form of preschool education, and you reduce that number to zero, we think that is very attractive for people to want to not only continue to reside in the district and have their children attend, but also potentially for people to move from the other side of the state line. Again, very debatable, but we're pointing it out because it's something that's come up in our discussion. And finally, we know that, we understand that KCPS spends approximately $2.8 million per year in early learning appropriations, which we understand could be recaptured or recouped by the district by doing this, because, again, the tuition reimbursement from the tax revenue would cover that. So, with that, let's turn to the proposal. Again, Herb sort of laid out, we're asking for a $1.05 mill levy increase, or, excuse me, we're not asking, we're recommending, we're not here to sell anything. We're recommending a $1.05 mill levy increase assessed, assessed on property. Herb has pointed out the five-year sunset provision. We're also planning to write in there an administrative expense cap of 8%, which is, again, modeled after the Denver program, and again, should get, from a risk management standpoint, should give you some assurance there. The tax revenue, if the voters approved the ballot in August, would flow in January of 2017. There would be obviously an implementation process and then a boarding process for new providers, after which there would be enrollment, we'll get into that process, but essentially KCPS, as the funds flow in, would agree to pass through those revenues directly to the ELC. I'm not going to get into the additional technical language on Proposition C, that's still being discussed, but needless to say, it is a technicality that needs to be fixed in the ballot language in order for the maximum amount of funds to be available to the ELC. You'll notice on page three, an exhibit which is our sample ballot language. I'm not going to get into the legal nuances of this mainly because I'm not a lawyer, but we have it there, we have it there for you to look at. What I'd really like to spend some time talking about is the governance structure. What is this sucker going to look like? Okay? Well, we've talked about the Early Learning Commission, we've noted that it's a 501(c)(3). Why did we, why did our commission and our discussions over these years, why did we decide to utilize an independent governance structure? Well, there are essentially four reasons. Number one, it's modeled after programs that exist in other cities. Again, from an empirical perspective, we see something that's basically, you know, something we can take off the shelf and borrow the best aspects of it to model into our program. Secondly, we know that there's empirical evidence that it works. As Herb indicated, our polling data indicates that we get a bump in the poll numbers when it's done that way, and it also ensures equal representation and a perception in the community that it's truly an independent organization. The responsibilities of ELC include, and you see all of those aspects, it's basically the umbrella organization that manages the day-to-day operations, including budgeting, compliance, maintaining good ethics guidelines, oversight of the Quality Review Commission, which I'll touch on in a second, and also ensuring reporting, vendor management, and also personnel, and, you know, and personnel decisions such as the hiring of an executive director and any, any ancillary staff. What does the ELC look like? What, what, you know, what is the board composition of this organization? We have five designated directors by the mayor of Kansas City, the school board chair of KCPS, Kansas City Public Library, Mid-America Regional Council, and the Missouri Charter Public Schools Association, and then there are a maximum of 10 at-large trustees. There'll be a nominating committee, which will submit recommendations, and the full ELC board will vote on any new board members. Turning to page five, you'll see, you know, that there'll be officers and the different sort of voting majorities that are required in order to implement policy and make, and make decisions. So, that's ELC, that's the umbrella organization. We'll, we'll show you an organization chart here in just a second. But a component of ELC, if you want a working committee of ELC, is called the Quality Review Commission. That's on page six. That is the functioning quality assurance entity of this organization. It is comprised of subject matter experts, the best and brightest, we hope, in the area. There's a, there's a tremendous amount of local expertise in the early childhood education space, and even pilot programs that have been done in, not only within KCPS, but also administered by entities such as Mark, and so we plan to tap into that. The primary functions of the Quality Review Commission are to, obviously, build our network of providers. Again, only 25% of children within the district are served by high-quality education. We obviously want to raise that number much higher. And so, to do that, we've got to, first of all, set up a system of comprehensive data-driven funding requirements or standards for providers who participate in it. The more, the higher quality, the more standards that they meet, the more quality that they can demonstrate to us, the more funding they will receive on a tuition reimbursement basis, and I'll get into that in a second. For any provider that enters the program and is thus eligible for funding in the program, we're going to put them on a quality improvement plan. So, if a provider enters in at the one-star level, we want them to get to a three- or four-star level, so we're going to put them on a quality improvement plan with a one- or two-year timeframe deadline in order to get them to do that. We, one of the exciting things that we looked at in the Denver program was that they assign a coach to each provider, and along with that quality improvement plan that's drawn up, essentially help, help them navigate through that, and also, you know, point them to funding that would be available if funding is a barrier for them to raise their quality standard. And that would allow not only a provider to raise their quality enough to be eligible in the program, but also would allow an existing provider to increase the number of quality seats that it has in order to administer the program. So, the third primary function of QRC is to administer the QRC grant program. In our discussions, we believe this would probably be modeled after a program that Mark has already done, the Mid-America Regional Council, but basically, again, for those entities, they would, not only would receive tuition reimbursement on a per-student basis, but they would also be eligible to apply for grants to help build their capacity. Capacity's been identified as one of the big challenges. On day one, you're not going to go from 25% to 100%, or, another way of putting it is that Rome, Rome isn't built, wasn't built in a day. The other additional responsibilities of Quark include creating the implementation plan, which will have to, have to be developed, assuming the tax is passed, and also our geo-targeting, which I'll get into in a second, student enrollment and student tracking, curriculum development and alignment, and also, obviously, analysis of the statistical data, the assessment data, kindergarten readiness, third-grade reading scores, in order to fine-tune, fine-tune the program and the quality rating system. Obviously, there's going to have to be a strategy in place to recruit teachers. We hear that a lot from community stakeholders, and then obviously, and then Quark is also going to facilitate not only public comment, but also interface with community stakeholders, including potentially providers, to get their input, because providers live, eat, breathe early childhood education, and we need, we need a means to, to get their input. You see the commissioners, the makeup of it on page seven. Again, these, the intent is to, you know, have Quark be comprised of subject matter experts. So, these are going to be, the designated positions are from the entities that have expert, unique expertise in the space, so includes designated members as well as at-large commissioners. On page eight is another exhibit, which is the organizational chart. So, you see, again, the Early Learning Commission functions as the umbrella, the oversight organization, and Quality Review Commission is something that, you know, flows directly under, under their authority and, you know, executes the quality assurance component of the program as, as well as staff. On page nine, you'll see a sample budget allocation. Again, we, we're going to cap administrative expenses at, at 8%, but initially, we sort of envisioned this sort of mix. Don't hold our feet to the fire on this, but we're putting this in here as a sample to show exactly, you know, where the dollars are going to be spent in an effort to show that the dollars, you know, follow the students. Okay. On page 10 is sort of a summary of the enrollment system. How does the consumer, the taxpayer, you know, view this program if they want to enroll a child? Obviously, we're going to have substantial website resources based upon websites that are, are already being utilized in other cities. The parents will be able to see a list of providers, their locations, program descriptions, quality ratings, and so forth, and for those parents who don't have online access, ELC will provide written resources at designated locations such as, you know, public libraries, community centers, churches, et cetera. We'll also provide live assistance via telephone. Once a parent selects a provider, parents will contact them, complete an application, provide proof of residency pursuant to the compliance requirements of the program, and furnish any other required enrollment information. They then submit that to us. So, each year, ELC will determine the annual tuition reimbursement amount on a per-student basis. When they receive an application, the intent of ELC is to be what we call the last dollars in. So, our software will subtract out or deduct the federal, state, or state funds for which the child is eligible, such as Head Start or the Missouri Preschool Project, from the annual tuition amount. We'll also determine the number of funding requirements or standards. Is that a one-star provider that's doing this, or a three-star provider? And we'll make some, we'll make some deductions or additions there. Obviously, we're trying to incentivize greater quality, so those providers that provide higher quality will receive a higher tuition reimbursement. And then, we'll compute the provider's tuition reimbursement amount, and ELC will provide the, the additional dollars to, to make, to make everything whole. So, the money will not go to the parents, it goes straight from the ELC to the provider. That's an important thing to keep in mind, and obviously, ELC will be in charge of monitoring students and verifying residence, residency and so forth to make sure that the program is in compliance. On page 11, you'll see a summary of how we deliver quality, probably the number-one concept that was, was, that carries through from the day the original commission met until today, which is, we've got to deliver quality, 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 quality. And, you know, we, we, we believe that that can be done, but we know that it's being done in some cities. For example, in the city of Denver, when their program began, a little over 60% of their providers were three- or four-star providers. Well, they've since built that network up to 91% by incentivizing quality. And again, the way we do that is, the higher the quality, the greater the tuition reimbursement. So, there will be rigorous ELC funding requirements, and the more funding requirements that a provider meets, the greater the, the greater their rating and the greater the reimbursement. And obviously, our coaching process will ensure that the lower, the lower-rated programs will get, will get moved up along the way. You'll see a summary of the, of the grant program, and obviously, the method by which we're going to increase quality through customized quality improvement plans. On page 12, I think is a very exciting aspect of the program and something that kind of carries, it's something that we don't see necessarily some of the other cities doing, but we think it's really, really important, and the idea here is to deliver high-quality early learning centers and make sure that that delivery is occurring in areas of the city that need it the most. So, there's existing technology that Mark has, where they can take an overlay of the, of the, excuse, the map of the KCPS district boundaries, they can over, they can break that down by census tract and overlay household income information. So, we, and, and once they do that, they can then overlay the location of the provider network. So, we've all heard of, of the term that's out there about, you know, food deserts, you know, areas of the city that don't have quality grocery stores. Well, there's also a concept out there called an early learning desert, and what we want to avoid is pockets of the city that need it the most, that have the most low to moderate income homeowners, that are potentially the most underserved in our committee, and we'll have the data and the technology to be able to strategically target those areas and work to incentivize providers, high-quality providers, being in those areas. So, we think that's a unique way that we could address the, the knowledge gap, if you will, and potentially even help the fade-out effect. So, we're excited about that because, again, from just a social justice standpoint, we think that's, that's a really laudable thing to look at. Final page of the document, and then, I know you guys are probably all worn out, but we did insert a compliance and oversight summary here. Obviously, you know, programs, programs like this exist in other parts of the country, but just to, just to remind you of the day-to-day compliance system that's going to be in place, you see the various components of that system, which would include comprehensive policies and procedures, professional management, there'll be quarterly reporting to KCPS and interested parties pursuant, not only to our policies and procedures, but also any state or federal requirements. There'll be a third-party vendor management program in place, will obviously be subject to independent audit, and Herb, Herb outlined, you know, how, what the, what the cure conditions would be, and, and there would be accountability to, to the ELC board of directors as well, as well as the public. So, that's a summary of the proposal, and we'd certainly welcome the opportunity to entertain any questions, and if that took so long, sorry, we needed to be thorough.
Just a couple more minutes. Yeah, I think certainly I want to compliment everything that has gone into the proposal, the amount of work. Again, this is a volunteer group that has been working in this initiative at the direction of our board for over three years, and so, obviously, the amount of work shows, and, and the enthusiasm and, and the content is terrific. What I'd like to do very quickly is to summarize a little bit about some of the areas that we're continuing to focus on regarding what you heard from the ELC. We know that what's being requested is that funding for the project would be done through a tax levy increase, that it would be implemented through an agreement that we would have with the Early Learning Commission, "we" meaning KCPS. One of the things that we've tried to draw a conclusion to or an analysis is, what is the relationship between us and our sponsorship with a charter school? We want to have that similar type of relationship so that oversight and the accountability that would be required for those funds would be very transparent, be very available, because as those funds go, come, come to the district or are received by the district, the Board of Education is going to be held accountable and responsible for how those funds are going to be distributed. So, we want to make sure that that system is in place as effectively as possible. Now, as we look at this and we look at how we can do this and make it potentially a reality, we, we know that we would, we, if we were to put this on, on the ballot and the board would be required by a majority vote of the board to go ahead and place it on the ballot, we, we think that there may be some additional information that would be helpful for the board. One would be to initiate additional polling, more up-to-date polling, and what kinds and types of community engagement would be required in order to assure that we have an appropriate level of support for a tax increase. It's been over 40 years before, since we've had a tax increase, and we want to make sure whatever it is that we do, we do it right, and we're thorough, and we're adequate, and our community is prepared for that. We want to make sure that we determine the appropriate amount that can be approved by our voters in terms of what that tax increase would be. And so, this chart is just a simple, an example. The numbers on the far left were just picked out of the sky, what a 30-cent levy would be, a 50-cent levy, a 75-cent, or the $401 that, that Herb was referring to earlier. The reason for the $401, so you're aware, that dollar amount is the maximum amount that the board could ask the voters by taking our total levy to $6 and have it approved by a simple majority. Anything over $6 requires a 2/3 majority vote. So, the reason we got to the $401, $0401, is because our current levy is $4.9599. So, the difference is the 1.0401 to get to the 6. But you can see the amount of money that that tax would be, that would generate. On the $0401 would be a little over $29 million, the 30 cents is about $8.5 million. The cost of that increase to a homeowner at $100,000 home is listed also there. So, if you're trying, we, we pick $100,000 because we can do the math easily. If it's a $50,000 home that you live in, cut it in half. If it's a $200,000 home, double it, and it'll give you a perspective of the impact that that's going to play on the levy. Now, we took a look, and we talked a little bit about the legislation that has been in front of our legislators in Jefferson City. We're, it's, it's still uncertain, as I understand it, as to whether or not an election could be, could be conducted in August of 2016, but if it were, the submission to the election board would have to be by May 24, 2016. What we've done and we've listed here are what all the dates are over the remainder of this year and all of next year. One of the things that's not included on this chart is to also indicate, I think George alluded to an election, that's a statewide election on Raise Your Hands for Kids, Tobacco Tax, that I believe is slated for November. So, there are other elections, and so we would want to take a look at what other, what other items might be in front of our voters as we go forward. So, we're going to take a look at that. But I think as we look at this... But I think, as we look at this, we want to look at development of that agreement with the learning, Early Learning Commission to implement that program. And the agreement has to include the appropriate oversight and control by KCPS. The cost, or lack of cost to the parent, or if there is a sliding scale that could be incorporated. And I think, as George indicated, ensuring that our children with the highest needs have access to high-quality providers where they live. And then our next steps, as we go forward, there's a lot of information. I think George, or Herb alluded to that, about how, the complexities behind this, and the amount of information that's included here, and the things that will be going through your mind as we talk about it. So we've scheduled board mini-briefings, so that if you don't get your question answered this evening, we'll have opportunities to continue to do that by having board members sign up for the mini-briefings, where we can go into it in a little bit greater detail. We want to move forward with an RFP for additional polling services to get more information, so that whatever it is that we do, and how we organize a potential campaign, we have it with good and current, up-to-date information. We want to have a comprehensive plan for community engagement. If there's one thing that I've learned since I've been in the Kansas City Public School District, is we can never do enough community engagement. So one of the things that we want to be able to do is have a comprehensive plan of what that community engagement might look like. And then we know that it's going to cost something. We cannot use operating funds to run a campaign, and so we need to raise funds for this ballot initiative. And then we're going to continue to monitor what Senate Bill 996 does. We'll know for sure what it's going to do by the end of the, by the end of this week, because the session ends Friday afternoon, or Friday evening. So we'll have that answer for sure by the end of the week, in terms of what impact that has. And so with that, now.
Wonderful. And we want to take about 30 minutes or so for engagement with the board on questions. We are in the information-seeking stage, and so there is additional opportunities for us to get that information as well. And there's, does it require board action for tonight? I also want to encourage our audience to, if you have a question for the Q, the number's Again, 269-2935, if you have a question, we will read that. I saw Board Member Hartzwell first, and yes, go right ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Commission for their hard work and their diligence, but I do have a few questions. You referred to the poll where people were asked, do you want Universal Child Care? We want this all over the country, that's correct. Do you want to pay for it? Well, yeah, the question is, how do you pay for it? And do you want it by an independent third party? That's fine. The question I have, and interim Superintendent Tunis stated, we haven't had, used our taxing authority in 40 years. That's the only way we have to raise money for our entire system. Early childhood learning is not the only problem we have. It's one of our problems. I do believe that we need to have early childhood learning, but I do not feel that, if we look at the Denver model, they did not use their taxing authority. They used sales tax. I'm very concerned when we're going to use our only ability to tax for education on one initiative, because not only is early childhood important, but we have students' buildings, properties, that we have to make use of our taxing authority for. So I'm just a little bit concerned that we keep making the connection with Denver, but this was not the taxing mechanism that they used.
Well, every, you mentioned Denver, and of course, that's the one we probably know the most about, but every city is different. Denver has one school district in the city of Denver. You know, we've got, what, 14 or something like that in Kansas City? So there's one major difference between Denver and Kansas City. And in response to your question about, your comment about, do we really want to use our $1,500 or whatever it is that is available for early childhood and not use it for other things, you know, that's a decision that you've got to make. If you think that you can pass a tax levy for programming, or new buildings, or whatever, then you can do that. Our indication is that there's a much greater likelihood of the voters approving a tax levy if it's tied to early childhood education. But you certainly can try to do the other. And on, just to respond to Al's chart of .30, .70, all the other numbers, that, because that ties into your comment, too. If you did .50 instead of $1,500 for early childhood, leaving you .54 for something else, you'd have to go back to the voters on a separate, on a separate levy election, asking them to use that money for something else. And keep in mind what I said early on, in five years, the whole $1,500 comes back to you, and you can do whatever you want with it.
Board Member Fiero?
Yes, Madam Chair, just a point of clarification with Mr. Tunis. Al, you said that if we were looking at increasing it beyond $6, then we would have to get a 2/3 vote for it to pass. But if we stay right at $6, it's just a simple majority vote?
That is correct. That's a state statute. All school districts operate with that same.
Got you. And so is the key, because we hit the 6, go over $6, or?
Right. The $1,401 plus our current levy of $4.9599 equals $6.
Board Member Oats?
When you, when you guys went over the Mark slides about how you have the geographic overlays, where we will incentivize, incentivize, excuse me, providers to go into areas of high need, can, can this Commission actually, I guess, I'm just thinking, how can the Commission, what barriers, I guess, do the Commission have as far as incentivizing anyone to actually go into those communities in need? Like, if, if everybody wanted to build, let's just say, in my sub-district, so Brookside, is there, could, is there any authority that ELC has to say, we're not funding anymore here? Or, I'm just...
Well, one of the, you know, one of the advantages of the independent entity is that we would be able to strategically plan in terms of, in terms of the provider network over the entirety of the district. And some cities, and I'll cite San Antonio and Tulsa, they've actually built centers. San Antonio in particular, you know, they actually spent their money, their sales tax revenue, on actual building physical centers. We don't think there's a need to do that, but what we're saying is, if the growth of our provider network, you know, from an organic standpoint, is creating these pockets of the city of great need, you know, then you've got the ELSI and the Quirk leadership there looking at that, saying, look, we have the technology to focus in on that area and do some strategic, you know, planning, and some incentivizing, which could include maybe helping construction, although that's not really, you know, that's not really our intent. But it is our intent to deliver high quality in the areas of most need, through whatever means we, you know, we can go through that are reasonable. But the fact that we have that technology, the fact that we've thought about that, is something that's within, you know, our Commission members, we're excited about. There's real momentum to deliver on that, so.
Okay, so my, I guess my, my possible worry is, is, you know, we can have the technology that identifies that area as a place for need, and I guess, I mean, you see this playing out on a higher level, you know, but how do you, you know, how, if we're going to provide the funding, the tuition reimbursement, no matter where that quality provider is, how can we get somebody? How can we tell that provider, hey, let's not go to this neighborhood, it's oversaturated, let's go to this neighborhood?
Well, remember now, there are two sources of revenue within the property tax money. Remember, there's money that's allocated for tuition reimbursement that's budgeted, and then you have money that's budgeted for capacity building through the grant program. So that's where the holdback could occur to target within that particular area. And so to sort of, kind of take this down to kind of the ground level, how would we do that? Well, we would engage with, you know, providers within that particular geographic area, or we might look at providers that are outside that area, and look at ways to incentivize them to maybe open a center in that particular area. And there may be other ways of doing that, but that's the general idea.
And one more question. Should, should this go to the voters, and should it be passed? I guess, how soon after passage would, I guess, the operation run, and we are actually starting the actual funding of programs and things like?
So that's a good question. Funds would flow January of 2017, assuming that the voters pass the initiative in August of 2016. Then there would probably be, and again, we haven't, firm this up, we have an implementation working group that's going to finalize these details, but we envision that there'll be a ramp-up process, followed by a boarding process, where we'll have to build our provider network, and get them rated and so forth. I've heard some speculation that maybe it could, it could be, we could begin to deliver in the fall of 2017, but we have not set any firm implementation dates. But we understand and know that there's going to be a lag time between the date the first dollars flow in, and we pull the trigger.
You know, Mr. Oats, one of the things, too, that when, if you were to look at that particular slide that showed the election dates, the August date, the November date, and there's a question, again, because of the legislation on that August date, but one of the issues that we have, other than just whatever is on the ballot in November, because our tax bills have already gone out. Taxes can't be collected in January of 2017, because they've already been built, and so it won't, the taxes won't be generated until January of 2018, which is another thing you have to look at in terms of the timing, and helping to identify the most logical time.
Well, okay. Board Member Lewis? I almost don't even know where to begin here, but let me follow up on, so the most logical time would be May 24 vote? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the vote would be August, the... In that particular scenario?
The deadline for submission.
That's the deadline, right. One of the, one of the problems that we don't know about is, in the bill that's going through, that went through the Senate, there was an emergency clause, which means it would go into effect when the governor signed it. When it was approved in the House, the emergency clause was not included. So as it now has gone from the House back to the Senate, if it is now approved, the emergency clause is not included, which means the earliest that it would be approved would be August 28th, 6, something like that, the end of August, after that election date. So we won't have clarity to that until the end of the week, for certain. So there is an issue with the very first date, just based on whatever happens in Jefferson City over the next two days.
There is another possibility, and, you know, since this just all happened last night, none of us are that current on what it might be, but there is a possibility that even if the emergency clause is not hooked on, on the House version, that, but the governor signs it, that we could go to a vote in August, too. I, don't hold me to this, because I haven't found this out yet, and we may need to talk to the Attorney General. But it may be that if the governor signs it, we know it's going to be a law. The law just hasn't been implemented yet, and because it doesn't matter for our purposes, since we don't start collecting taxes till next January anyway, the Attorney General or whoever is in charge may say, you can go ahead and hold the election, because we know the law is on the books, it just hasn't been implemented yet, but the implementation doesn't matter for your purposes. So that's another possibility, and as I said, don't hold me to that, but that is a possibility that we could try to, try for.
So help me understand, what requirements of this board is needed for it to even get on the ballot?
The Board of Education would have to vote to place it on the ballot, in a, in a resolution that would be prepared, and they would have to prove it by a majority vote.
So that vote would have to have happened before one of these deadlines?
Correct.
In order to?
Well, Al, don't you have a special meeting scheduled for the 17th?
Right. In order, if we were going to try to meet the 20, our next scheduled board meeting is May 25th. We have the special meeting on May 18th for the purpose of parliamentary, or parliamentary procedure. So it would have to be either a special board meeting, or a meeting on the 18th to do that, because if we waited until the 25th, we missed it by a day.
Let's take a question from the Q. What was the percentage of students reading on third-grade level in Denver and Tulsa before and after Universal pre-K?
Okay, so, third-grade reading, and I believe this is Tulsa's number, was 64% compared to 56.1. That was the second generation of third-grade, and that's comparing participants versus non-participants in third-grade reading. And that's the only ones I have, specific numbers I have right here at my fingertips, and obviously, there's the KCPS data as well, that's in your report. And we can certainly provide additional information, whether in the mini-briefings or to the board, if you want to see all the particulars, but I don't have, like, you know, all of that.
Just to inform the audience, we are going to be adding addendums to our presentations with questions that we're not able to provide adequate information for at the time of the meeting, so go back onto Board Docs and look up the presentation there, and you'll find those updated answers. Board Member Woski?
Okay, thanks again for this. I'm thrilled we're finally to the point where this may come to fruition. I do have a question, though, about the sunset. I'm not sure I'm understanding that correctly. It's the five years at the 105, or 104, but, oh, one. But the regional authority, explain to me how that does or does not fit into how that sunset occurs. I can't tell if the, we're only doing this for five years, or we're doing it for five, but then we may or may not have the option to renew based on the regional authority.
Perfect.
I got it right.
The five, the five-year sunset is written into the ballot language, so we don't have a choice there. The voters are, if they approve it, are saying, we're going to approve this, but only for five years. It's over. The regional authority where that comes up is entirely unrelated to that. There is a movement afoot for, in this, in this community, larger community, to have pre-K everywhere. And for that purpose, there's been talk about creating a new authority of some kind. I compare it to the Jackson County Sports Authority, that was created by the legislature just to run the sports complex, and it has its own taxing power. And if you'll recall, it has used that taxing power over the years. So this new regional authority would have that kind of power. It could have a sales tax, property tax, I don't know, earnings tax, I guess theoretically, but it could have whatever kind of tax it can get the legislature to give it authority to issue. But whether that happens or not, this tax, the $1,500, ends in five years. And if you want it to go on past five years, you've got to put it back on the ballot.
Are there any, are there any board members that have not spoken that have a question? This is Board Member Manzer.
So if we ultimately ended up making a decision that we, we know that there, there's some question about August of 2016, there's some indication that a November election date would not be ideal, given other initiatives on, that are coming forward. So the next potential option for us would be April 4th of 2017. If we were to do that, in, pursue a ballot measure on April 4th of 2017, the monies would not flow in until January of 2018. So what would be the mechanisms, or what would be our... So what would be the mechanisms, or what would be our avenues for funding? There's quite a lot of the organizational work that has to happen. If it were to pass in April 4th, there's a good lead-up time. Unfortunately, I guess it's unfunded lead-up time. And so where, where do we, I'm asking the District and LC, where would we anticipate getting the resources to cover the costs of the, um, infrastructure pieces that would have to be developed?
Fair question. Uh, we have, we have been able to, uh, get some money from community people. Uh, I, I think I mentioned in my earlier presentation, Coffin Foundation gave us money with which to conduct the poll. We've had some operating money from, uh, Burns and McDonald's, we've had some operating money from Kansas City Power and Light, and our trip to Denver was sponsored by the, uh, Francis Family Foundation. So, we've picked, and that, and all that money was contributed based on their belief that this was going to happen. Now, if we go to them now and say, well, it may not happen now for another year, maybe, I can't promise that they're going to continue providing funds for us, and then that leaves us very few alternatives. Uh, not that anybody's being paid to, to do this, but we do have some operating money, the bank account, the secretarial service that we use, and so on. Uh, so I don't, I don't know, Patty, where that money would come from, or if it would come.
I think one of the other, there are a number of options. I think, I certainly agree with, uh, what Herb has just said in terms of, uh, our philanthropic community. Um, but the, the other, um, banking mechanism that is available to taxing jurisdictions is something called the tax anticipation note. You're able, uh, the organization, the agency is able to borrow against money that's coming in from taxes. So, school districts, um, as an example, if they don't have an appropriate fund balance to take care of their cash flow, oftentimes in this, in the lowest ca- that's why we use that one chart that Mr. Oates shows us at the very end. If, if that nu- if, if you'll look at where those, the spread in October and November, you see that we've spent more money than we've actually received. Many districts that don't have that money in the bank to cover their cash flow have to go and borrow through the, this term of a tax anticipation note. And what it does is a lender will look at that and say, well, they're going to get their money, they're going to get it in January when the taxes are due and the tax bill, and therefore will lend them the money. The only caveat is, it has to be paid back by June 30th of the, or by the end of that fiscal year. So it, it helps you with your cash flow.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if they still do, but Jackson County operated that way for years with, uh, tax anticipation notes. But of course, it had a, it had a tax base that was in place, uh, so we would have to... Well, I guess, I guess the district does too, yeah. Yeah, I think that would work, sure.
Board Member Hartsfield?
Yes, I have a, a sort of feeling of deja vu in the sense of being under the gun again. It's the same kind of piece that came before us when, uh, we were looking at being a sponsor, that, you know, there was the deadlines that were within a month of, of information being presented. I guess my, when I listened to two questions that were also raised, one by, um, Board Member Lewis saying, I'm not sure where I'm at, where to start, when I listened to the question that Board Member Oates raised, which also raised, is a question I didn't, uh, pursue earlier, is that providers, if you have an area where no one wants to provide services, you can have an equity of services. Um, I, I don't like the idea that we make such a decision on our only source of revenues, revenue, without having better understanding amongst all of our board members, and really looking at that this is not the only alternative. I mean, once again, I, I think this is a sort of difficult piece to get to, because all of us want early education. We all understand that if you start early, you get better results. But we just don't educate early learners. We have persons in our system all the way to 12th grade, and so we have to provide for all of our persons. And that 1.041 can't just be for a portion of the larger population. Um, so I, I, I'm just wondering, when we get such a deadline or such a, uh, I, I'm just perplexed.
Board Member Lewis?
Uh, and, and one of the things, it says that the problem and why we even started this process, from what I understand, is that we have a significant number of children not ready, and it says 40%. We talk about a 6,000, uh, number of pre-K kids, and I'm assuming it's total, not just low income. Um, so that 40% that we're talking about is actually 2,400 kids that are not ready. So if I'm following the logic of needing this levy, it's for those 2,400 kids, about closing that gap. And I understand there's the balance, but some of them are already being served. We said 25% are being served, so that's 1,500. So when I'm looking at all this, it's like, if the priority is that 2,400, what I don't see anywhere in here is how much a cost associated with a certain number of kids. I see a recommendation based on what's the max available. So even when you look back on the chart that lays out the recommendations, and you say if the levy increases 30 cents, if it's 50 cents, another column would be nice. Well, here would be the number of kids we would be able to serve at that. Because right now, it seems like $30 million, let's get it, and then there's a lot of questions after figuring it out. I have a question about providers. You know, we have a lot in our neighborhoods. We have daycare provided by small business owners, possibly licensed daycare. Do we anticipate them becoming providers? Like, do we have any kind of indication, if we had to figure out right now, who would the providers be? I mean, there's just a lot of questions even around that piece. And then, the other piece, and I don't even need answers probably at this point, the other piece is when we talk about partially reimbursing providers, depending on where they are, who do we assume will eat those costs, um, for the per- part, percentage that's not reimbursed? Is that something that we're going to pass along to parents? Is that something that the providers will then have to just consume? Uh, and, and one last thing, because I know it came up with us talking about our early childhood. What I don't see in here is transportation or before-after daycare. And I know those are two prohibitive costs that sometimes keeps parents from even enrolling their students in daycare, I mean, pre-K, because mom or somebody else is keeping. So there's a lot of variables to, that are unanswered to what I feel like rush and decide handing over $29 million to anybody. Uh, especially when we don't see what our other priorities as a district is, kind of to Dr. Hartsfield's point, relative to where else is this money needed? And is a portion needed somewhere else to help move some of, somewhere else?
Are there any responses to any portions of that? Um, just want to give, um, our presenters an opportunity to respond.
Yeah, so, so as I, I jotted down your questions, so the first question, I think, was basically, uh, the number, number of children. We're happy to share our math with you in terms of what we're proceeding on. We, we estimated an $8,000 per student cost, uh, which, at the time that we did that, was a fairly conservative estimate, uh, meaning that was, we tried to err on the high side. There are, are varying opinions about where that number ultimately is, but, um, and we based it on an 80% participation rate, which is something it took Tulsa, as an example, 10 years to get to.
80% of that, 6,000?
Yes. Yeah, which is, I think, 4,800, 4,800 students. So yeah, secondly, I, I think the question was, and then correct me if I've, if I've mischaracterized it, basically, who are the providers? How do we know who the providers are? Um, well, and, and you have an example in, in your packet, uh, that, that Mark has, um, while not a completely thorough landscape study of providers, it has a, it has, I believe, we believe it's, I think it's a Head Start database. Uh, so that's a good starting point, but obviously, one of the things our implementation team will have to do is take an inventory of the providers within those particular areas. But I think that's where our geographic targeting comes in, in terms of mapping out where those providers are. And then as those, uh, providers who, uh, wish to become eligible in the program, make themselves known to us, or apply, uh, to be a part of the program, obviously, well, that, that'll flesh out the map, uh, at that particular point. Um, you mentioned, uh, uh, providers in terms of their reimbursement, for those who are reimbursed less than, than, than the others, based upon their quality rating. Uh, number one, uh, you know, Denver utilizes that, and it appears to be working very, very effectively. But, um, you know, the second thing is, we're not going to allow a school to pass on expense to the parents. So if a school came in for, let's say, an existing pre-K provider that has a $10,000 tuition amount wants to come in and participate in the program, well, we're not going to reimburse them $8,000 and then, and then have them layer on an additional tuition expense to the parent. The intent of the program is that it be free, uh, to, to, to the parents. You mentioned about transportation. That'll be something our implementation team, uh, will take up, um, based upon, you know, the funds available and, and whether, whether that can be done or not. And, um, Jerry might be able to speak to whether, what-
At $8,000, you wouldn't be covering transportation?
Right. Do you got, okay, yeah.
Board Member Fiero?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. I, I guess a, a question, and I know this was covered earlier, George or Herb, you might want to respond to this, but I, I would first say, I, um, I, I sympathize with the, the comments and the concern by my colleagues about it feels like this is rushed. Uh, I would tell you that I participated on this commission for a full year. And, uh, as you heard earlier, there was follow-up work over the last couple of years by Herb, George, and, and, and others. They have put countless hours into this initiative, answering questions, and so I know we're having the upcoming briefings, and again, it's very rushed. But I, I would say that, that the reason that we want to, um, seriously consider an April ballot, uh, or, I'm sorry, uh, an August ballot date, is really that the timing and the potential success of, of this being, uh, supported by the voters. So, I, I don't know, Herb, you want to just repeat, repeat that? Because I know, uh, in, later in the year, in November, we have the Children's Fund, and then what else do we have coming up? So, August does provide an opportunity. Would, do we feel like we would be the only thing on the ballot at that time?
That, that's our understanding. Uh, November, of course, is the general election. We don't know what a large turnout does. That's one issue. The other issue is to raise your hands for kids. Third issue is a competing sale, cigarette sales tax that the convenience store owners are putting on the ballot. So you have two cigarette tax, uh, issues up. You're going to have the general election, and I don't know what else. Next spring, I know that Mayor James wants to put on a gigantic bond issue. Uh, and, uh, we could, we could not really start fundraising this year, uh, until after the E-Tax election, because we promised him we wouldn't, and we didn't. Uh, and I ma- I imagine we would run into the same thing next year, that he would want the community to focus on the, uh, bond issue, which is very important to the entire city. Uh, so I don't know whether any of these other dates are, are going to pan out or not, and I don't know what is in, what else may be on the ballot on some of these others.
Thank you, Herb. And, and my final comment would be, uh, again, to my colleagues, I know this seems very rushed, but, uh, to the four of us that have come onto this board, and this is our third meeting in 45 days, we have moved pretty fast, and there have been a number of issues that have been presented to us, that we've had to put faith in the previous board, that they have vetted those, uh, issues. And I would say this is a good example that, uh, when we went onto this commission, uh, there was a strong sense of support from the board. Uh, I know Mr. Heil was a part of that commission, Mr. West was a part of that commission. So again, uh, while we have a lot of questions that probably can't be answered in a short amount of time, I think just as we have demonstrated over the last 45 days, we need to put faith behind the previous board, who commissioned this, uh, group to, to study the issue, and we need to see this through.
Board Member Woski? Okay, great. Board Member Oates?
Just, uh, thinking about the, the, um, the possibility that we could have to act on this in a short time period. Um, just a little background, I know we talked about an RFP for proposal, I mean, excuse me, RFP for polling, but just in your experience, you know, you, you talked about the, the successes and failures that happened in Tulsa and, um, Denver, especially on the first time it was voted. Um, what is the source of, I guess, opposite, opposition? I know there's, you know, anti-tax crowd on any time you talk about the tax increase, but, you know, is there like a daycare lobby, or, I don't, I, I, I don't know.
Um, I, I think, you know, anytime there's a tax issue on a ballot, you've got to assume 35 to 40% of the people are going to vote no. Doesn't matter what it is. So there's your basic opposition. Uh, you've got another 35% that are going to be supportive, because for whatever reason, they like education, they like pre-K. Um, and, and so you're, you're really working with that middle 15 to 20% that you're trying to convince that this is a good thing. Uh, and I, I don't think we've really answered the question that's been raised by a couple of you about, well, what if we do less, or what if, shouldn't we use part of that money for, part of the tax levy availability for something else? Uh, y- y- you can do that, but I, I don't think it'd be, this is my own opinion, it'd be a wise thing to do for mo- for several reasons. One, it's probably not going to pass. Uh, number two, it, it, you, you're killing everything. It doesn't give you enough money to do anything meaningful, and it doesn't give us an opportunity to put in a full, uh, early learning program the way it should be. So I think that'd be a lose-lose.
Uh, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Fiero, your comments, and I, and, and I do realize three years is a long time to be working on something. So my, my, my reference to rushing is in our piece of it, not in assuming or implying that I feel like what has been presented is rushed, or not quality. So let me be clear about that piece.
Thank you.
And, and, and part of the rushing is not anybody's fault in this room. It, it's taken the, it, it took us that long to get the charters to agree to support the legislation. It took that long to get the legislature to, uh, act, so that was beyond all of our control.
And our last question from, um, Board Member Hartsfield.
Yeah, I, I just want to be clear about what I stated. You know, I wasn't about trying to parcel up the levy. That, that's not what I was stating at all. And I also wasn't stating that, that the proposal's not good. Once again, my issue is the funding of it through our tax authority. I do believe that there are things that we can use the money for that would be beneficial, would not be negligible, and I do think that there are ways that your proposal can be met by not using our tax and authority. Now, that becomes the issue of where do you find that money? Um, but I, I do not want it to make it seem as, as if the use of our tax levy, other than for your proposal, would be negligible, or something not done. You know, that's, I, I, I'm sort of taking offense at that, in a sense. I support the proposal. I do believe, though, that the 501(c)(3) can find its money, not necessarily from the tax authority of the school district. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we certainly would be happy to take your suggestions as to where we could get that money.
Thank you so much, uh, for the hard work that you all have done, your recommendation and your leadership in this area. We are extremely grateful for that. Um, this brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening, so if there is no objection, the meeting will be adjourned. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.